Thank you Director Green. I believe tonight we sent around the latest and greatest. We want to ensure that we have some level of documentation. Consistency from the other night. So, I guess Director Thompson, if you could, well first and foremost, let me make sure this, we're recessing the hearing from yesterday. Bill's twenty-one dash one seven two, twenty-one dash one seven three, and twenty-one dash one seven four is committee as a whole. We are back in session. And I believe we got the interlineated version as well as all of the amendments that we talked about yesterday. So Director Green, if you could go over the, Director Thompson, if you could go over the document that we sent out?
Yes. Good afternoon, councilmembers. Just to recap, a updated tracker with the changed amendment numbers based off of these finalized drafts that were also sent around has been shared. The same amendments that were discussed at our prior session are still the amendments that are up for discussion today, which is now amendment number five. It was previously amendment number four. But now it's been renumbered to amendment number five, which is an update to the eligibility factors to consider specifically, including those residing in areas that have been discriminated against by redlining, those residing in neighborhoods where the median sale price of a home is at or below one hundred and nine thousand. And we came to that number. I know Nathan is on the call as well. If he, we want to kick it to him to provide more justification as to how we came to that number after we go through the rest of the factors. Those residing in neighborhoods that receive at least two hundred per dollars per household in federal investments, that are the home investment funds and CDBG block grant funds. And those that are first time home buyers on housing vouchers, those same requirements still exist. They have not changed. These have just been added in addition. Amendment number nine, which is the same, which was previously amendment number seven, which is adding the LDA language that our general counsel went through during the last hearing. And then now amendment number twelve, which used to be amendment number nine, which is the recapture language and penalties if you do not follow through with the requirements of the program. In addition, we have the amendments from the comptroller's office that he went through, which require a signed acknowledgement that the applicant is accepting the property in its present condition. Requiring that signed liability lease, and then the requires the use of bonded and licensed contractors, which is very similar to the LDA language that we had as well. So the DLR has gone through and cleaned it up for us that it all is cohesive.
At this point, are there any questions? Or concerns? So I think the strategy is we'll just look at the amendments and we'll take them as a package and vote them out. So I guess if you could, I guess we'll go with the comptroller's amendments first. He came on, he's been on. We kind of see them as friendly amendments, so we're going to adopt all the comptroller's amendments. But we're going to vote on all the comptroller's amendments. Is there a emotional floor to adopt the comptroller's amendments?
After Mr. President, after careful review and listening to the comptroller's explanations of all of his amendments, I make a motion to approve the comptroller's amendments.
Is there a second?
Oh, move second.
So it's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor of approving the comptroller's amendments, please say aye.
Mr. President, I'm sorry, I have a question. The document that was sent out to us has twelve amendments. Those are all included. Those are the law and comptroller's and yours.
Correct, they're all the amendments.
They're all together. So we're voting on all of these together or just the comptroller ones?
The motion on the floor is to vote on the comptroller's amendments.
Okay. Okay, thanks for the clarity.
Any more unreadiness? Alright, so we have a motion of force. We've properly seconded a vote on the comptroller's amendment. Director Green, if you could do a roll call.
President Mosby.
Aye.
Vice President Middleton.
Aye.
Councilman Bullock.
Aye.
Councilwoman Ramos.
Aye.
Councilman Cohen. Councilman Cohen. Absent. Councilman Costello. Councilman Costello. Absent. Councilman Dorsey. Councilman Dorsey. Absent. Councilman Stokes.
Yes.
Councilman Conway.
Aye.
Councilwoman McCray. Councilwoman McCray.
Yes.
Councilman Torrance.
My apologies, Ms. Green. I just joined the meeting. I just want to know where we are.
We're voting on the comptroller's amendments. There's a motion on the floor. It's been seconded.
Aye.
Councilman Barnett. Burnett.
Yes.
Councilman Glover.
Yes.
Councilman Schreifer. Councilman Schreifer. Absent. Councilwoman Porter.
Aye.
Eleven yeas. Four absent.
Alright, so the comptroller's amendments have been adopted, amended onto the bill. Next up, we can go to the technical amendments from the Law Department. Nikki, if you could read off the numbers for the technical amendments from the Law Department, we're going to just vote on all of them at the same time as well.
Yes, so to begin in Bill one seventy-two, the First Amendment from the Law Department is amendment number five, which will be, I'm sorry. The first amendment, the first technical amendment will actually be amendment number two, which is whereas on page two and line fourteen, we strike and, and on that same page after line fourteen, we insert whereas the eligibility factors and other criteria named in this legislation were informed by the Urban Institute's twenty twenty report, which we did send that report around. That's the first technical amendment. Do you want me to go one by one, Council President, or?
Yeah, because after you list them all off, we're going to vote on them.
Okay, wonderful. Next is amendment eleven, which is on page ten. It strikes line eight through eighteen in their entirities. And on that same page, it strikes F in line nineteen and substitute C on that same page, beginning with ownership in line twenty down through and including the period in line twenty-six, and substitutes of ownership of the property to the participant at a sale price established by the apartment, by the department. Which is removing the prior language that was, had, had the lease rate set at a dollar. And then finally, the Law Department had language for the recapture provision, which is number twelve. Their previous language, we had an amendment to. Their previous language had a Roman numeral two under sub clause one. And we replaced that with language that would place a lien on the property in an amount equal to the total dollar amount of city assistance the participant received, including tax credit. But those are the only amendments, technical amendments from the Law Department.
Motion to approve the Law Department's technical amendments.
There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
The move.
So it's been moved and properly seconded. Also, no, I'm sorry, we had to do a roll call, so Director Green, if you could do a roll call.
President Mosby.
Aye.
Vice President Middleton.
Aye.
Councilman Bullock.
Aye.
Councilwoman Ramos.
Yes.
Councilman Cohen.
Yes.
Councilman Costello. Councilman Costello.
Director Green, Councilman Costello is asking to be elevated to a panelist.
Councilman Costello.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I am doing dual duty in a planning commission hearing. I'm not able to vote on amendments. I will vote on the bills, as I mentioned to Director Green. If she could please call me when the bills are up for a vote. As amended, I will chime in. Thank you for your consideration and excusing my absence, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Dorsey. Councilman Dorsey. Absent. Councilman Stokes.
Yes.
Councilman Conway. Councilman Conway.
Aye.
Councilwoman McCray.
Yes.
Councilman Torrance.
Yes.
Councilman Burnett.
Yes.
Councilman Glover.
Yes.
Councilman Schreifer.
Yes.
Councilwoman Porter.
Aye.
Thirteen to two. Thirteen yeas, two absent.
Alright, and then Director Thompson, if you could go over the additional amendments that we worked on with external folks and the agencies and all the new amendments that we are going to vote on tonight.
Our First Amendment is in one seventy-two, amendment number five, which is an update to the eligibility factors. Additionally, wanted to point out that even further, based off of some further conversations that we had yesterday, the language now says the department shall consider the following factors when determining the resources available for an individual's application to participate in the program. It then adds these additional requirements, well not requirements, but additional considerations. Residency in an area subject to the historical, historical practice of redlining as described in subsection eight of section two C one of this subtitle. Residency in a neighborhood where the median sale price of a home is at or below one hundred and nine thousand dollars. Residency in a neighborhood that receives at least two hundred dollars per household and Federal Department of Housing and Urban Development Community Development Block Grants or Home Investment Partnership Program Funds. If an individual is a first time home buyer, if an individual has debt related to tuition and fees for a professional certificate program, if an individual has discharged bankruptcy debt, if an individual has an income at or below one hundred and thirty percent of the city's median income, if an individual receives a housing subsidy or in a, or is on a waitlist for subsidized housing at the time the individual submits the application for the program, if the individual has experienced a foreclosure of any type in Baltimore City, if the individual currently resides in a designated impact investment neighborhood, if the individual has previously been evicted from a rental property in Baltimore City, or if the individual is a participant in the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development Housing Choice Voucher Program. Amendment number nine, which is on page nine and it strikes lines two through twenty-five.
Excuse me, I'm sorry to interrupt. I just dropped something in the chat. Can someone from the council president's team resend these amendments or just fool with the email and time that they were sent out? Thanks.
Director Thompson, you can resend that email?
Absolutely.
And to everyone that was on last night, these are ninety-nine point nine percent the seeming amendments that we all covered yesterday in depth. There's one slight change, and she already covered that.
Actually, Director Green sent the email, so Director Green, would you mind forwarding your, your email as well? It's actually not in mine.
Okay.
I'm CC'd, but I'm not finding it readily.
Does anybody else need it? Everyone, everyone else has it? If you could resend it, that would be really helpful.
Confirming, these are the four or six amendments? I just want to make sure.
Thank you again, Director Green, for rescinding.
Chairwoman McCray, did you receive?
Thank you. I do have the email. I'll, thank you.
Thank you. Director Thompson, if you could continue.
Amendment number nine on page nine strikes lines two through twenty-five and substitutes in land disposition agreements. The department will sell the city's interest in a property in the program to a program's participant at a negotiated price subject to, number one, the conditions of a land disposition agreement created by the department, the program participants' completion of the duties and obligations contained in the land disposition agreement. And three, the land disposition agreement's restrictions, covenants, terms, and provisions. Sub, sub clause B is the recordation of the agreement. The land disposition agreement described in subsection A of this section shall be recorded in the Land of Records of Baltimore City. Subsection C, right to recover properties. The land disposition agreement shall contain explicit terms to allow the department to recover a property if the program participant is unable to complete the rehabilitation or renovation, or the program participant is otherwise unable to complete the duties and obligations described in the land disposition agreement. Sub clause D, transfer of title. Title to a property will not transfer to the program participant until settlement, and no prior entry to a property will be given to a program participant without prior written approval of the department. Sub clause E, transfer of the title. The minimum requirement in order for a property title to be transferred to a program participant, the participant must have completed an inspection of the property, submitted a signed acknowledgement of the property's present condition at the time of the settlement, and submitted a project description that includes, one, a description of the repairs and renovations that the participant will complete, and now it has been amended to just to a schedule for the repairs and renovations to be completed based off of the suggestions from Commissioner Kennedy yesterday to remove the prior requirements. Sub clause F, financing. The program participant must demonstrate to the department that the participant has the equity capital or commitments for the financing necessary to complete the repairs or renovations named in the project description required by subsection E. And then finally, progress reports. A participant shall report in writing to the department the progress of construction, development of the repairs and renovations named in the project description, and agree to obtain all required permits and pay all application fees for the repairs and renovations named in the project as well. And then finally, amendment twelve, which is the re, the full recapture language. When the title to a property is conveyed pursuant to section two C seven of this subtitle, the deed shall contain the following conditions with language approved by the Department of Law. The failure to maintain the property by the program participant as the participant's principal residence for at least ten years, as measured from the date of the deed, shall entitle the city to, number one, declare default, two, exercise an option known as a right of reversion, which shall allow the title to the property to revert to the city, or three, and three, place a lien on the property in an amount equal to the total dollar amount of city assistance the participant received, including tax credits. And the right of reversion described in paragraph one of the subsection shall automatically terminate on the tenth anniversary of the date of the deed, provided no default has occurred, as described in the prior subsection.
At this point, are there any questions or concerns regarding any of these amendments? Hearing and seeing none, I'll call for a motion.
I make a motion for Bill number one seven two to approve amendments five, nine, and twelve, correct?
Yep. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion on the floor. It's been properly seconded. Director Green, if you could do a roll call.
President Mosby.
Aye.
Vice President Middleton.
Aye.
Councilman Bullock.
Aye.
Councilwoman Ramos.
Yes.
Councilman Cohen.
Yes.
Councilman Dorsey. Excuse me, sorry. Councilman Costello, he's considered absent. Mr. President?
Yes.
Councilman Dorsey. Councilman Dorsey. Absent. Councilman Stokes.
Yes.
Councilman Conway.
Aye.
Councilwoman McCray.
Yes.
Councilman Torrance.
Yes.
Councilman Burnett.
Yes.
Councilman Glover.
Yes.
Councilman Schreifer.
Yes.
Councilwoman Porter.
Aye.
Thirteen yeas. Two absent.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Now, I know Councilman Torrance, as well as the Law Department, I believe Councilman Torrance, you sent over some recommendations for the Law Department. I'm not sure if Victor, you had an opportunity to kind of read through and and see if it's something that is, we normally include, or we should include, or provide your feedback to.
Mr. President, it was covered by the LDA, so I'm good.
Also, it's already embedded in the LDA. You checked it, Victor?
Yep, the, I saw the Law Department's review about thirty minutes ago.
Oh, perfect. Victor, if you could just kind of walk us through that, that review real quick?
Uh.
I haven't read it yet. I didn't see it. You didn't do it?
No, I think, I think the councilman is saying that basically the LDA is covering his concept, so.
Yeah, yeah, that's what he said. I was just wondering if, well, I guess I'll go to you. Uh, uh, Councilman, if you could just walk us through quickly your recommendation yesterday and what you were able to discover was in the LDA.
Um, for the council's purposes and for the public, when there is a sale of a property, equitable conversion covers when, after the signatures or the execution of the LDA, once both parties have signed, the risk of the property's damages or anything else, or loss of damage or property to it now shifts to the person that's the buyer and not the city of Baltimore. So basically, we are covered under the LDA. So we do not in, take on any new liability after both parties have signed.
Thank you for that background, Councilman Torrance. With that, I believe, are there any other remaining amendments that are out there that we need to talk about? Director Thompson, General Counsel DeGraff and Wright, or anyone from the Law Department, or any other council members?
Council President, I have a question, if you don't mind.
Yes, sir.
I just want to know who's second, the motion. Who, Council, Vice President Middleton?
It was, it was Chairman Stokes.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Mr. President, Selena DePietro.
Hello, Elena.
I have a quick question.
Yes.
As far, in the group of amendments that we received today, there was, there was nothing for one seventy-four. Is that because we didn't change anything on one seventy-four?
Yeah, I don't think, I don't, I don't remember any changes on one seventy-four.
I mean, there were some changes, but we didn't add any additional changes.
Correct, there's no additional ones. Nick, Director Thompson, are there any additional amendments out there for one seventy-four that you know of?
No, one seventy-four is the same iteration from the February fourteenth.
Okay, thank you. Just making sure.
No problem. Thank you, Elena.
And I guess to that same point, Director Thompson, are there any additional amendments that you know that are out there from council members, from the administration, Law Department, us? You said no?
I have not received any additional amendments or requests to follow up on amendments.
Alright, I guess at this point, are there any additional questions or concerns from members of the committee?
Mr. President, I've been trying to figure this out, but I know that your, your answer before for me was that the banks would handle it. I think that, and I haven't, honestly, I don't have a solution for this in, in, in an amendment phase, but you know, working from the initial question that I had about the making sure that whoever participates in this program isn't going to be underwater at the end of the day. Um, and so anyway, I haven't, I haven't figured out how to, how to word that any better. Um, because I think you wanted to just leave it at, you know, the, the bank will take care of that.
No, I didn't, what I said was that it's not going to appraise, so, you know, the bank is going to loan out eighty percent of whatever it appraises at typically. So normally, you know, when you get into a mortgage, you already have a certain level of equity in the property. And the fact that we've also increased the amount that we're putting in from twenty-five to fifty thousand dollars based off of the comptroller's amendments. You know, I thought that that was sufficient enough to take care of any of your concerns that you might have. So the idea that the bank is going to do their evaluation from an assessment perspective, as well as the additional money that we're putting into the property, kind of the two things that I, I thought we. kind of the two things that I, I thought we, we're trying to drive at to support your, uh, your concerns.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Are there any other questions, uh, concerns about the amendments out there? Who's playing the good music for us? Nothing?
Councilwoman.
Yeah, Commissioner Kennedy?
I have one question, if I could be allowed to ask that.
Yeah, uh, Commissioner Kennedy, whenever you come from, in front of the council, you're always allowed to speak.
Thank you, sir. Um, question I have, when I was reading through, uh, the interlaid, interliniated amendments, I did have a question that I wanted to clarify on the application, um, that we discussed at last night's meeting. The bill states that the application is required to, um, include the, um, the bill states that the application is required to include, um, the items that are part of the application, such as identifying the property, having financing in order, et cetera. So I just wanted to s- make clarification on that, because as written, the application doesn't take in consideration what you, we discussed last night about eligibility, because eligibility would be determined when the application is made, and the application is required to have all of the items that we, um, laid out in the bill, such as it's required to have the property that the individual is interested in, documentation of the amount and sources of funds, the list of, um, all the residential addresses for the 10 years where they've lived in Baltimore City, the amount and source of their income, their housing certificate, the acknowledgement that they're accepting the property in present conditions, financing and so forth. So, there isn't a two-step application process as the bill is written. So, eligibility wouldn't be determined until they've actually had to go through the due diligence of all of these things to determine if they were eligible. So, um, I just wanted to bring up clarification on that timeline, because it's different than what you described last night.
Uh, not, not really, Commissioner. I think that when you brought the issue up, you were talking about the arduous task of them getting right to entry of the property, going in, utilizing a contractor to identify what was needed, and all of those steps. I think what I was saying was, um, that that's not going to take place until after they're accepted into the program. The eligibility requirements, in order to get into the program, you have to provide, you know, proof of, of financing, that you have been pre-approved, and kind of the other things you listed. I think the one thing that you brought up, um, is identification of a particular property, so that they've gone into the, the registry and identified a particular property that they want. Um, that, that's something that we could push off past the, um, the, uh, the application phase, but all the other stuff to identify who you are and the eligibility, there's no point of having someone go down the path of going into a house and figuring out what house they want if they're not eligible for the program. So that's why all those other things are important, that's what we talked about yesterday.
Right, but what I'm pointing out is that the application, when they make their application, the application as written in the bill language requires that they have, I, the properties, or the property that they're interested in, and documentation of the amount and the sources of funds and the plans to use to repair the property. So, that would mean that they would have already, they would have had already needed to have gone through finding a property, taking the contractor, identifying funding, having the source of funds to make that application.
So, so identify a source of funds, that's all important, because we don't want to put people in the program and have your folks kind of evaluate them if they don't come to the table with financing. The one thing that should be removed is the plans and the identification of property, that's what we talked about yesterday.
But they won't be able to identify their source of funds, or even get pre-approved, or looking at some of the source of funds without a clear identification of the total rehab scope of what they're looking for.
No, you can certainly get pre-approved for a 203K without, no, I mean, because basically you get pre-approved for a certain amount, and then you go find the property. That's how typically, that's how it typically works.
You can do that, and in this instance, if they're approved for 125, they can come to us and say that they have $125,000 and they're interested in this property, but if they haven't reviewed that property, gone in, taken their contractor, looked at it, then it, and the cost to renovate it is 225,000, then they're not going to be eligible for the property based on the fact that they can't obtain the financing.
Correct.
It's, I, I have concerns about the timeline. I'm just going to state that I have concerns about the timeline as it relates to eligibility requirements and the application, and it's still being confusing and not lining up with what would be in the best interest of the buyer. I'll just leave it at that.
That, that's fine, Commissioner. The, the one point I would, I would, uh, just go back to say is, that's why we have, um, that's why it's a privatization based off of AMI, uh, because the lower AMI will have access to the lower pool of properties based off of, uh, what they can afford to fix up.
But we don't know what the lower pool of properties are, because they have to do, uh, if I'm a lower, if I'm a resident at a lower AMI.
Correct.
And I am, and I am approved, and I go and I get approved for a mortgage of 125 or 150,000, there isn't anything that evaluates the pool of properties for the cost of that renovation, of that property. So, there isn't anything that create, that is a lower, I guess I'm confused by what you mean by a lower pool of properties, because there isn't anything that divides the properties into cost of renovation.
Yes, it's something, I mean, quantifiably is square footage. So you take a dilapidated property that's going to need a brand-new roof, it's going to need new windows, it's going to need framing, it's going to need all the typical mechanical things associated with, for property. You know, 1,400 square foot property is going to be a lot cheaper than developing, say, a 2,800 square foot property.
But we've had 1,400 square foot property, it all depends on the condition of the property. You can't just go by square footage based on what we're seeing in the city of Baltimore.
Totally agree, totally agree. So, in order for us to do it the way that you're talking about, we would literally have to go property by property and come up with an inspection note to know exactly what we want.
No, I'm not stating that, I'm stating that it's, the, the way that the bill is written in terms of how it requires the application, that the buyer, it's not about having a a, a list of the, of the properties and the cost of renovation, it's about giving the buyer the opportunity to know what they're getting into for a specific property, because the application requires that they identify the property, that they have identified sources of funds, you know, and so forth, as part of that application for eligibility. So, if the buyer needs the eligibility, they're going to go through a lot of work to potentially not be eligible for this property based on the eligibility requirements, because they haven't been set up into what is required under the application and the due diligence that they're going to have to do and before they get the chance to find out if they're even eligible, because the eligibility requirements are not very clear as we discussed last night. So I'm just, once again, bringing up that it's not about us needing to then have to go in and create a list, it's about being clear for the buyer what steps they need to take at what point in time to have as much information to make the calculated decisions and the effort and work. Because in order to also get pre-approved, that is a hit on their credit when they go in for preapproval. There are other components there that if they're not going to be eligible for the program at the get-go, then why make them go through the hoops to get a preapproval and find out their financing if they're not going to get, um, if they're not going to end up being eligible for the program?
So, you said two things. I, again, I totally agree about identifying the property and the plans to apply, and that's what we talked about last night. So I totally agree with that, that should be after someone is eligible. Regarding the financing, there's no other way to run a program other than having some, I mean, we don't want 10,000 people to, to, to have to go through the eligibility checklist and 6,000 of them can't get financing, right? So, the idea of, the idea of, of, of someone getting pre-approved, uh, for a mortgage, um, to enter this program, uh, and the couple of points that they take hit on their credit to, to enter the program, that's just part of any housing program that you try to enter that, that requires some level of preapproval prior to going in. You do not have to take a property to your bank to get pre-approved. You do not know, have to know exactly how much you need to get pre-approved. You do not have the construction kind of plan in place to be pre-approved. It's just going to literally be based off of whatever that financial institution's underwriting scheme is for preapproval to determine if you're going to get pre-approved and for how much.
And there are additional components when looking at the rehab loan piece of it, and I'm, it is, I'm going off of, in order for someone to place an application with us, to determine if, because the application is what determines if they are eligible for the program. They can complete the application. Per the bill language, in order to complete that application, you have to have identified the property, identified your source of funds, and go through all of those components.
Correct.
And then to get to the point, which is a significant amount of due diligence, to then get to the point to find out, after we review all of those things, that actually they weren't eligible, because they didn't li, they, they didn't live in an area that received m- more than $200 per person CDBG incentive.
Commissioner Kennedy, I think, again, we, and we talked about this last night, we didn't want to make it rigid, we can decide to make it rigid, but we provide the, we provide the flexibility, and I think the specific language is, show consider. So we gave a certain amount of factor. So just like, you have to be 18 years old, you have to be a city resident, the other things that you, you keep harping on, like the CDBG money, they're factors that you can use. Now, what we would like is for, hold on, if you'd let me finish. What we would like is for particularly folks that are from the red line, most impacted communities in the city, to be prioritized first. So if I come to you and I'm over 18 years old, I'm a city resident, but say I meet none of the other requirements, and then Councilwoman Ramos comes to you, she's over 18 years old, she's a city resident, and she meets all the requirements, the idea is that she would be first in line based off of the, your consideration and evaluation of her. I totally agree with you about the identification of a property, uh, at the, uh, at the application, but there has to be certain levels of eligibility, and we did not want to make it rigid for housing to say, in order for a person to get in this program, they must meet X, Y, and Z, and this is what you do. We made it, we, we had show consider to provide flexibility, uh, for you to develop the program.
And I understand that, sir, and I'm talking about what is stated on the application process, because the application language states that the application must include those items. So the eligibility may be flexible, but the application that they come in on must include items that are going to be difficult.
They have, because that's the only way for you to, that's the only way for you to determine, that's the only way for you to consider those items, like they have to bring that to you. So, the, the, the reality is, you don't have to do this program. So you don't have to provide us your proof of where you lived at, you don't have to provide us, uh, uh, any of this stuff. If, if you want to apply to this program, then you have to come with these requirements, so you can do your evaluation. But this is not a requirement that you have to do so. This is just, if you want to apply to this program, you have to check these boxes to apply to the program. So, I mean, and that's like any other program, I mean, i- you know, whether it's signing up for, 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 for children for soccer, like you have to come to register, you have to bring these items to register, that's all we're saying. Now, you're not forced to, but if you don't, you won't be selected or, or eligible to be in a pool to get access to this program.
Okay, I understand, I still have reservations on that, based on making it as easy and simple, uh, for people to apply, um, based on the language. And at that, I'll just state that, that still is a reservation, and that concludes my statement for...
Well, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Kennedy. Are there any other questions or concerns from members of the council? Are there any questions or concerns from other members of the administration? At this point, I'll take a, a motion to, to vote the bill out as amended.
I make a motion to vote, to, uh, vote out bill number 172 as amended.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, Director Green, roll call.
President Mosby.
Aye.
Vice President Middleton.
Aye.
Councilman Bullock.
Aye.
Councilwoman Ramos.
No.
Councilman Cohen.
No.
Councilman Costello. Councilman Costello, absent. Councilman Dorsey.
He's voting, uh, he's putting on the bills, he wasn't voting on any amendments.
Councilman Costello.
He's coming on.
And for their first amendment.
Councilman Costello.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Director Green, which bill are we voting on?
172 favorable, as...
And, and all, and all of the amendments passed?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Director. Uh, Mr. President, I'd like to explain my vote. Uh, first, I, I am a yes vote to vote this bill out of committee of the whole. Um, I do have, um, some concerns that I've not, uh, finished working through yet. Um, those concerns revolve around whether or not there may be unintentional potential to create harm for our residents. Um, that being said, um, I am certainly aware that that is, uh, not the intention of the sponsor. I want to thank you, Mr. President, for all your hard work on this, uh, and ensuring that we've had a robust discussion on this. And I look forward to continuing to discuss the issue, uh, with you and your staff and my colleagues. Thank you, Mr. President, I'm a yes vote.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Dorsey. Councilman Dorsey. Absent. Councilman Stokes.
Yes.
Councilman Conway.
No.
Councilwoman McCray.
No.
Councilman Torrance.
No.
Councilman Burnett.
No.
Councilman Glover. Can you repeat, Councilman Glover?
Yes, yes.
Councilman Schreifer.
Yes.
Councilwoman Porter.
No.
Seven ayes, seven nays, one absent.
I'm mute, Council President.
Mr. President.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Sorry about that. So, what we're going to have to do, we'll come back, um, for 172, uh, as well as 173, 174. Uh, we'll continue to work through, uh, any amendments or any problems or, or questions or concerns that council members may have. Uh, at this point, is there any unreadiness or any, any questions or concerns that, that, that folks have?
Just for clar, uh, Mr. President, just for clarification for 174, so there are no amendments, everything was, um, rewritten from the, with the Law Department had, uh, discussed early on, is that correct?
We, uh, we had already voted on all the amendments, so there was no new amendments to apply to 174 today.
Okay.
Or in the previous meeting.
Thank you.
Are there any additional questions or concerns? Are there any additional questions or concerns? All right, this will adjourn, uh, this hearing, uh, we'll come back again, uh, to, to talk over one, seven, two, one, seven, three, and one, seven, four, thank you, guys, have a good night, Baltimore, we love you.